To our regularly scheduled meeting for this day, Tuesday, the 25th. We've already been in session. We'd adjourned at 2:00 and we're going to now re-adjourn to our conversation that has been scheduled for 5:30 today, which is concerning cannabis in a workshop for the Delano County Board of Supervisors. Welcome, public. Appreciate you being here. To start this workshop off, we are going to have a presentation from Joel Campbell Blair from the Delano County Council's office. Joel, please get us started today if you can.
Okay. Thank you. I'm getting over cold, so if I sound a little stuffed, I apologize. I'll try to be clear. We did this, I don't know, six weeks ago or so, and it was a full overview of the entire situation. That's a lot of information to process at one time and it's a lot to fit in, an hour, hour and a half. So, this workshop will be specifically about land use, planning, and environmental impacts. The intention is to do a couple of these, one for enforcement, one specifically for maybe tax and market situations, and then the various stakeholders who are more expert at those can come in and offer their input. This presentation was developed largely with CDD. Maybe later ones will have input from the sheriff, the DA, DHHS, things like that. So with that being said, land use, I think, is the most important part of this ordinance creation. I actually think land use is the most important of the local functions of a county. It's really the guts, the heart of local control. Land use is where the county decides where things go, what things will be allowed, but more importantly, it's the opportunity, the legal framework, and the opportunity for the public and the board to try to mitigate the effects and capture the positive externalities of various uses. So this is really where the county has an opportunity to really develop the benefits and the burden of the situation and partner for them. This is a map of our county, and I'll have to zoom and move around because it's really big and really detailed. But if you see here, all these black lines that cover most of the map, that is what is publicly owned in Delano County. So right from the get-go, we are not talking about anything happening anywhere in there. And I want people, I want the board, I want the public to be able to immediately picture where in the county we're talking about actually having cultivation. It's not anywhere there. Our other natural boundary is this blue line that is the coastal zone. It's not impossible that we would allow cultivation here, but it's a bigger hurdle. We'll talk about that later. I think it's kind of unlikely that we go that route. So what we're really talking about as a county, where we're discussing possibly allowing this, is on this brown land use designation of timberland and on this green, non-coastal ag zone. There's not a lot of it, mostly around the 101, the 197, Elk Valley, and a little bit down in Clamette, a little bit out in Big Flat for some reason. That's a land use designation, it's not the actual zone. This is TPZ, this is PO, whatever little scraps of FR and things that we have. So when we're talking through here about the general plan, about the zoning, about use permits, really, the area we're talking about is kind of a sliver right here. I think from most people I've talked to, this is probably the area that is most desirable in the forest, a little warmer than Smith River, and this ag land is kind of a maybe. So that's kind of a starting premise here. So with that being said, you know, land use is, I think, the guts of local control. Most things, especially in our advanced state, are set by the state of California or even the federal government. We have all these essential services we provide with money from who knows where, but land use is really where the Five View and the Planning Commission, Eagle Point, and the people that come out are really deciding the environment of the county, the social environment, the character, the vibe, what goes where, how big houses are going to be, where to cite schools and hospitals, how to protect the natural environment. You know, we have a lot of things that go into the general plan and the zoning that we have that all need to be carefully considered when we talk about changing that or allowing a new use. So with this process and the opportunity for the public to be heard and complain and make their voice known at, you know, each hearing for a use permit throughout this process, this is really an opportunity for people to try to find this balance between the potential benefits of allowing cultivation and the potential costs. This conversation, this workshop, is not going to be about identifying those exact costs and benefits. Those are hard to do. I think everybody has a different perspective on what they are. It's kind of subjective, and I'm going to try to say neutral, but what I do want to talk about is if somebody has a particular view on what a cost or benefit is, you know, what is the legal framework for addressing those? What can happen, what might happen, what would be extremely difficult to make happen? And that's really where our land use comes in. The one cost that I want to be really clear about, the cost of cannabis that we know we're going to have is, if we allow it, we're going to have to amend our zoning, possibly our general plan, and engage with SEQA. So that is a cost automatically, just cost to do business, and we'll talk about how to maybe reduce some of those costs, but that much we know, you know, when weighing the pros and cons that's in there. So the general plan, most of you probably know, the public might not, the general plan is a document that's pretty thick, but also pretty vague. It sets forth these broad policies, but it doesn't tell us exactly what we have to do with our land. We create this, and then everything we do after it has to be consistent with its values. In case law, it's often called the constitution for our local land use planning. It has these major elements that we have to address: land use for the county, housing, circulation, conservation, noise, safety, open space, or sometimes called scenic resources. In each one of these, there'll be value statements for specific types of land. Those two areas that I put up there, the timberland and the ag, are the ones that we're going to focus on, and what the general plan says about them, and then kind of what zoning looks like. Any action, any project, any law has to be consistent with the general plan, but that's not perfect consistency. It's not perfect conformity. It's just compatible with the objectives and policies of the plan. So, you know, when we talk about the nuts and bolts of a particular ordinance, people want to have a certain type of cultivation ordinance. It's not that the general plan has to say that specific ordinance is allowed, but there has to be an assessment of whether it's compatible, whether it's consistent, whether it furthers the objectives of the general plan. Within the general plan is the local coastal program, which, once it's approved, it becomes part of the general plan. This includes both the kind of general plan elements, but also actual implementation ordinances, and both have to be certified by Coastal Commission. Coastal Commission is going to review what we propose, and almost always, they're going to propose changes. It can be a difficult process and a costly process, and they have values that they have to consider and achieve in the coastal zone that are additional burdens. So when I say it's unlikely but not impossible that we would do something in the coastal zone, this is one of the major hurdles, is we have to get certification. Every county that I've been able to check who has tried a coastal zone amendment is still waiting. They basically kicked them all a year. So in the general plan, these are just a couple pieces of a larger framework that are more examples than anything else. This isn't the complete story. But for agriculture in the general plan and the conservation element, it says that we'll endeavor to preserve agricultural land for agriculture. We're not going to allow a different use unless it's no longer feasible to do agriculture on that land. One of the tricky things about cannabis thus far is that in some places, it's defined as an agricultural product, and in others, it isn't. It is maybe long-term, maybe way down the road when it's legal everywhere, it's just going to be another crop. But right now, it's still a controlled substance, both at the state level and the federal level, and there is going to be an inevitable black market for a while, which means we can't just allow it to grow in people's yards or on a general farm. It's got to be secure. We have to protect it because it's going to be a target, which means we really probably can't treat it as agriculture right now. If we wanted to allow it on ag land where, you know, our general plan says to keep ag land for agriculture, we would probably need to change that general plan to allow it or define cannabis as an agricultural product for our county code, and I think that'd just be complicated because it's not that way at the state level. This is going to be something that is going to need secure, tall fences that you can't see through and other security measures, and that gets us to the scenic resources, where our open space element says we're going to maintain our highways scenic qualities. You drive through Smith River right now on the 101, it's pastoral farmland. If it's full of high fences and greenhouses, I think that's going to violate our general plan too. So that's another area where we need to choose, are we going to change the general plan and all that entails, or are we going to say that this is incompatible use and move on to something else? The other area there is timberland. Our land use element says we're going to encourage ongoing timber production as a commercial activity and prevent the intrusion of incompatible uses. The conservation element's very similar. It's to conserve forest resources, enhance the quality and diversity of forest ecosystems, and reduce conflicts with other uses. That doesn't necessarily mean everything besides timber production is inconsistent. In the actual zoning, you know, our timberland is zoned TPZ or it's PO or something. This is an example from the PO ordinance. These are the things that are allowed without a use permit: state parks, national parks, national forests, and down there, geez, logging. Those are all obviously consistent with timberland in the general plan. But one-family residence or animal husbandry, guest ranches, those aren't, you know, obviously consistent with the general plan. So it shows you that, you know, somewhere along the line, I think the last time this was revised was '95, some people looked at this and said, "There's general plan consistency with guest ranches and timberland." It doesn't detract from the policies and the objectives of the general plan to allow these other things. So if animal husbandry is allowed, maybe cannabis would be too. Maybe that isn't inconsistent. That would require probably the planners to do a more detailed analysis of the impacts on timberland of animal husbandry versus cannabis farming. Our TPZ is a lot more narrow than that, but that could also be amended to allow it maybe with a use permit. Another interesting thing on PO is with the use permit, you can do a roadside fruit stand if you grow most of the vegetables yourself or fruit. If you can have a fruit orchard and a fruit stand, is it such a stretch to say you can grow some Maserati cannabis? Maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but, you know, this is the consideration. In our zoning ordinances, we have principal permitted uses and we have use permits. With a principal permitted use, you do not need any other authorization to do that use. So if this is an agricultural product and you're on ag land, you can do it without asking anybody's permission. But sometimes you can put performance standards. This is a good one from our code. In an emergency shelter district, you can have an emergency shelter without anybody's permission if you follow these rules, and there's a long list of those, those are examples: maximum number of beds, onsite laundry facilities, proximity to other shelters. It's possible to do an ordinance where you're allowed to do cannabis cultivation on PO, for instance, if you follow these rules, without having to go back to the planning commission for a use permit. We could have rules like you have to obey whatever restrictions: water quality, forestry, cal fire, all these people put on you, and then kind of we know that they're obeying something. It's kind of on their honor unless we catch them, and then we can do code enforcement on them. The advantage to this is that it's a lot less of an administrative burden, but disadvantage is we're not having a public hearing on every use permit, so neighbors aren't having the opportunity to come out and object. Another advantage is there's no vested interest. You have no vested right to your zoning. We could change it whenever we want, but it's not true of a use permit. You can develop a vested interest in that, and then you'd be grandfathered in as a non-performing use. The advantages of use permits, and this is why they're the common instrument contemplated, I think, in the state code and in most counties, you know, you're going to go in front of the planning commission, the neighbor's going to have a chance to show up and say, "No, I don't want that there. Here are my reasons. It's a little more political," but you have discretion every single time. It's going to have to be general plan consistent, there's going to be environmental review, it's a little more onerous to process, but it provides more control. Once somebody puts that use permit in use, they start using it, they build with it, they plant with it, whatever, they can develop a vested right and we can't take it away very easily. I think that's an important consideration here because state laws in flux, federal laws in flux. Every other county who's ahead of us has a lot of issues. I think we can count on revising whatever ordinance we make, probably multiple times. So creating vested rights to things might not be a wise long-term plan. Any change we do on any level, really, we're going to have to at least consider SEQA. And this is just a law that compels government agencies to consider the environmental impacts of their projects. If there's going to be environmental impacts, find a way to mitigate them or do a full study of them, depending on what they are. You know, environmental policies are protected: clean air, water, aesthetic, scenic resources. These are kind of the exact issues with cannabis. What's the effect going to be on the water? What's the smell going to be? If we're talking about greenhouses and generators, electricity. If we're talking about being able to see it and there's tall, black fences and big greenhouses, you know, what does that do for our scenic resources? Generators and Humboldt, noise has been an issue. So these are things that, you know, we look at every single use permit, we still might have to say, "No, you can't do that because you haven't found a way to mitigate these negative harms." The SEQA procedure is kind of easy unless it's really hard. If we're exempt, or if there's no impact, we're good. If there's an impact, but we can mitigate it, and maybe following all state regulations will mitigate the harm, and we can kind of rely on the state to fix it, that'd be great. Kind of put out a notice and wait for the public to challenge it, and if nobody does, we're good. If that doesn't work, an environmental impact report is really expensive. So to go back to those performance standards, if we're not going to do review on every use permit, and we're just going to have a big old program that says you can do it on your land if you follow these rules, that's probably going to require an EIR. We're going to have to say, "Well, what's the effect of all these people just having the right to do this without interference, without review on a case-by-case basis?" So, you know, call that $50,000 in a year of your life, you know. There's other environmental issues that I'm not going to go that far into. You know, the Smith River is highly protected and treasured. If you look at a map on the Wild and Scenic Rivers site, it's a pretty cool map, you can see all the protected Wild and Scenic designated rivers in the country, and there's not that many. There's little blue squiggles here and there, and then there's just a thick, dark blue spot that's the Smith River. There's nothing else in the country that's like it. It's highly protected, lots of land around the river is owned by state and federal governments, and that doesn't really affect us, except that it points to the fact that this is an environmental jewel, and it's going to have a lot of environmental groups looking at it, and so the stakes of environmental review, I think, are pretty high. It's not something that I think we should take lightly, the obligation to do review and consider these impacts. The outstanding national resource water, you know, this was something proposed by Water Quality, I think, two years ago. It looks like it stalled, but if it ever happens, it'll be a big deal, and probably whatever ordinance we have will probably be out the window and we'll have to do it all over again, and it could actually just be a game changer on a number of fronts. The public trust doctrine I wanted to bring up because it's interesting. We have a duty as a county to protect resources that are owned by the public in trust. This is a lot of like beaches and navigable waterways. This is a developing doctrine that keeps expanding, and until now, there's now some kind of unofficial unpublished cases where effects on groundwater that were kind of interconnected with navigable waters were held to be part of the public trust. So in Siskiyou County, they were taking too much out of their wells. It was lowering the water level. Court found the state had a duty to stop the wells. You know, we get into this highly protected river, and we're talking about groundwater, we're talking about runoff pollution. If we ever get to a situation where that's finding its way back to the river, you know, the public trust doctrine could create a duty to stop it. And so that's just something to keep on the horizon as something that is an interesting and changing area of law, and especially if this goes ONRW and that groundwater is there and it's really sensitive, that's going to be a thing. So with that brief overview of our land use situation, to go back to state law, you know, we're talking about two parallel but sometimes contradictory regimes of state permits, recreational and medical. The governor's office has proposed some fixes, some harmonizing of the two. It's not anywhere yet. I don't know if it's going to pass, but one of the good things in there is it would exempt counties from programmatic EIR on their zoning ordinance if there's review of every permit. This would just really help us out. All effects could probably be mitigated at the permit review level, and it's a little unclear, but maybe we could also change our general plan without SEQA review. So if we did want to allow it in ag land and we needed a general plan amendment, or if we did want to allow it in timberland and we found it was inconsistent with what the general plan says now, maybe we could squeak in without SEQA review. This is another reason why it's frustrating that state law is not set, why pass an ordinance now if we can pass a much better one in six months. You know, it doesn't make a lot of sense. There's also the fact that the state is supposed to be developing a bunch of regulations and issuing permits by January 1st. I don't know if either of those are going to happen on time. It's hard to predict what state law's going to be in a year. It's hard to predict what's going to be in five years. You know, if we do nothing, maybe the state does something weird. If we just put in a ban, kind of a moratorium, until state law solidifies, it might save us a lot of grief later, but, you know, there'd be some cost to that too, which we can get into. So last time, I talked about three general approaches to ordinances: the most permissive, to allow as much as people want, the complete ban, and then this kind of via media, kind of balance the costs and benefits and come up with something that might not be too difficult for us. Under this kind of general plan land use situation, the most permissive thing we could do would be to just define cannabis as ag under our county code and let people do it in any agricultural zone. It would mean going through the process with Coastal Commission, which isn't impossible. I mean, they allow farming in the coastal zone. This isn't necessarily that different, except, you know, there are some other values that the coastal zone has, and the scenic resources of one might be a big one. And then we'd allow it anywhere in timberland, as much as is consistent with the preservation of that commercial use. You know, there's a meadow or some area where they can grow without hurting the trees, just let them do it as much as they can. You know, those timberland zones are usually 20 acres or larger. You could probably fit a significant amount of marijuana in there without really damaging a lot of trees on a lot of ponds. This would definitely require a general plan amendment, significant SEQA review. Like I said, cannabis is not a typical ag product, so you've got fences, security smells, greenhouses. The LCP amendment would be a delay. So, you know, if you wanted to go full permit as much as possible, it's not just a hands-off, let them do their thing, it is a specific... Is everything right? It's not a hands-off approach to let them do everything. It sounds like it might be kind of the libertarian, well, you know, let the market sort it out. It takes a lot from us to invest in an ordinance that will allow people to do whatever they want. The complete ban is really easy. It'll probably be exempt from SEQA, or at least there'll be a negative declaration. We don't need to change any zoning ordinance or the general plan. We wouldn't have to put it in the zoning ordinance at all. We could go in the nuisance abatement ordinance, it's not a big deal. The pros is it allows the county to wait and see where the state is, it allows other people to bear the costs of innovation, it allows people like Humboldt to get out there and, you know, take their hits and figure it out, and then we could come in and be like, "Well, we know what works and what doesn't." The state, I think, really wants the counties to bear a lot of the burdens of figuring it all out. I don't see a reason why we need to bear that burden, but there's cons. I mean, there's an opportunity cost of letting what could be a budding marketplace and an industry here leave, you know. If they feel like Humboldt or Mendocino is more hospitable, you know, we might lose what interest people we have now, and who knows if they'll be here, you know, when we get back around to it. A lot of that analysis depends on how much is going on here, how much they're really going to come legal, what other industry, you know, what other parts of the industry, you know, edibles, retail and things are going to go on, and, you know, we can talk about that another day. The middle road, I think, is manageable. It takes some investment and some commitment from us, and then we will have to probably change it over time as state law develops, but it might not be too bad. If we start with the premise that we are not going to change the general plan, we're only going to change it a little bit, and change it in ways that will require only like a mitigated negative declaration, so that we don't get ourselves in an expensive review, and we don't go for the coastal zone. Go back to the map, we're talking about that narrow spot, the green on the east side of the coastal zone and some of that timberland, then, you know, we're dealing with a fairly small area of land, and then if we allow a fairly small amount of cultivation, 5, 10, 20,000 square feet, something like that, we might be able to mitigate all of those environmental impacts at the use permit phase. If the governor does get his proposal passed where we're exempt from the programmatic EIR, the SEQA review, at the zoning ordinance stage, it'd make it really easy. Then we'd just go straight to, you know, environmental review for each use permit. So that'd be pretty good. You know, we can do small, no greenhouses, parcels that aren't visible from highways, there's no scenic resources that are affected, you comply with all state agencies, and then, you know, small operations don't interfere with the principal uses, either agriculture or timberland. And since, you know, it's going to take a permit from the local and the state level to do anything, if the state isn't ready to go on January 1st, even if we pass this, you know, it's not going to be fully implemented right away. So, you know, there's still going to be delays. We're supposed to be up and running by January 1st. If we're not, I don't really see any consequence or harm from it. So that's it. I'm going to put the map back on the board and let... I'm going to go to whatever's next.
Great. Thank you, Joel. That was a great presentation. Having the map up tonight, I think, really helped pull that perspective in. Thank you to Community Development for helping to develop some of those materials for us. It definitely narrows the focus on where activities may or may not occur, depending on where the board takes this conversation in the future. The presentation, as always, terrific.
Thank you.
I'd like to open it up at this time... I'd like to open it up at this time for questions from the board before we go to public comment and then also, once that takes place, bring it back to the board. Are there any questions for Joel while we have him here at the dais? Supervisor Burke-Wood.
Can we take a look at the map further down, like in the Klamath area?
Sure. So there's the county line. You know, there's a little ag land here. This obviously is tribal lands. This, I believe, is mostly owned by--
So is that all tribal land?
No, just this, you know, right here on the river.
Okay.
A mile on either side or whatever the boundary is. This is all timberland.
That's a lot of area that could be utilized.
It is. I believe it's mostly owned by Green Diamond. I don't think they have any interest in applying for permits and subdividing and hashing it out to cultivators, but it's a thing, right? That's a use of the property. And, you know, there's a kind of a bubble in Humboldt right now, so it's not unheard of that the people would try to do that.
How do you wrestle the TPZ zoning timberland in that would essentially be a conversion of use with that? I know one regrows trees. This would obviously have to go to the conversion for timberland parcels in order to grow a consistent crop that needs sunlight in order to grow. How do we wrestle with that piece of it?
Well, it could be a conversion or it could just be the three acre exemption. They would have to just go through CAL FIRE to do that. We would have to adjust our ordinance. Humboldt's TPZ says with a use permit, you can do agriculture. Ours doesn't. Ours says, I think, a house, a pulp mill or something. Not a lot do we allow in TPZ even with a use permit. If we adjusted that and says you could do, you know, up to, you know, 20,000 square feet or something, 10,000 square feet, I think they might be able to get that exemption from CAL FIRE. But even if they did the conversion, you know, they could do that.
There's a very long process. I know we've gone through it here in the past. How does the county then see property tax associated type revenues if there's a conversion or this use permit takes place if we're not going to realize the value of the timber on the property?
That's something that we have to consider. You know, if it's converted, if it's converted to, you know, non-TPZ or non-TPZ as a tax status, it's still as a zoning, you know, property taxes go back on it. The exemption, I don't think that does happen. We might have to insist that it be rezoned if, you know, if we really want to protect that tax base. And those are issues that I'd like to get more into at another meeting when we talk about taxes.
Sure.
And I'm sure, you know--
Very nice.
There's more technical stuff that goes into that. But yeah, with TPZ, you know, if we're going to allow them to do the three acre exemption with CAL FIRE, you know, we would just, I guess, have to just tax the crop at a high enough level to make it worth it because we would be missing out on those property taxes.
Very good. Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yeah. Getting to definitions, Joel. In one of these, or in picking one of these options, are we going to have to define this as an agricultural crop or not? Or can we leave that to the use permit process?
Yeah, I don't think we ever have to define it. I think if we really wanted to allow it as much as possible, it would be helpful to define it as ag. But really, because it has some extra considerations, because it is a controlled substance still, I think we're better off leaving it to state law. State law right now says it's agricultural product for the purposes of some parts of the Health and Safety Code related to medical and some parts of the Business Professional Code related to medical. And then the Department of Conservation says that they consider it agriculture for the purpose of the Williamson Act. But those are pretty narrow things. We, I think, you know, don't have to define it as agricultural product.
And then another definition, which would be highway. How was the definition highway? You said not visible from highways. Are you talking about major highways, US highways or the def-- I mean, there's a, it can be a broad definition of highway.
It could be. The scenic resources element in our general plan specifically says we are going to protect the scenic resources along the 101, the 197, the 199. But there's more broad language in there. I think probably anywhere where it detracts from scenic views. And, you know, we're a gorgeous, you know, undeveloped county. We have a lot of scenic views and resources to consider. So, yeah, I think probably would be wise to consider that as anywhere people are going to see it, it's a scenic resource.
Thank you, Joel. Supervisor Cal. Oh, sorry. Supervisor Cal.
I was just going to ask, I mean, have many counties declared agriculture or changed it or defined it as agriculture? Is it just--
I haven't found anywhere that has decided to kind of jump in and call it ag. You don't really need to. The reason I was thinking that maybe it would make sense if we wanted to allow everywhere is in that general plan where, you know, we can't convert ag land if it's still viable for ag land. You know, calling agriculture would allow us to use that land without changing the general plan.
And then you also made a comment about you don't think the state's going to be ready come January 1st. Is that just a general feeling?
That's the general feeling of everybody who's paying attention to it. Even the state, I don't think, is as enthusiastic as they were. They're trying to do a programmatic EIR on the whole thing. Now, the government is trying to push that back on the counties with this incentive to, you know, take on the review at the use permit level. It's possible they're ready to go. It's not that likely. There just really isn't. They've got a lot of regulations to pump out. They got to harmonize two laws that weren't written in coordination. They need more than the governor's little fixes. They need some overhaul.
Supervisor Cal.
Yes, Joel. Delmar County is about 1,000 square miles. Give or take about 210 square miles is privately owned land. The rest is federal. Of that 210 square miles on this map here that you've identified, give me approximately how much we're talking about numerator, denominator. How much of that 210 square miles could be utilized to roll marijuana under the Adult Use of Marijuana Act Prop 64?
Well, so under Prop 64, you can do it for personal use under six plants with no permits on anywhere. So technically, anywhere that's privately owned by a person can be used for cultivation. But for the commercial cultivation, you know, I don't know exact, I don't know what the square miles is. If, you know, if there's 210 square miles left, you subtract out the city and the residential areas of the county, you're still looking at probably more than 150, 180. And, you know, it's mostly this large, these swathes of timberland here. So, I don't know. A lot. A lot of square miles.
The reason I'm asking is I want to know what our options are as a county. Does Delmar County have the option of outright banning--
Yes.
Prop 64?
We can outright ban the commercial cultivation. We cannot outright ban the individual use cultivation--
Which allows up to, I think, seven plants.
Six plants, yes.
So, under this Adult Use Marijuana Act, what does it say about possession or transporting or purchasing or giving away of non-medical use of marijuana? What are the bullet points there? Do you know that?
It's been a while since I looked at them, but yeah, it's basically things that used to be misdemeanors, I believe, are infractions now. It's, I think it's still a misdemeanor if it's a large enough amount. If you're a minor, I think you get an infraction in drug treatment or something like that.
But you have to be a certain age.
You have to be 21. The right that you have with the six plants is to possess an ounce and grow six plants and not give it to anybody. That's the right that you have. Anything beyond that is technically still illegal, but the penalties are not what they were. I don't think there's a felony involved anywhere unless you're a repeat offender or you've There's some specific crimes that if you've been convicted of, it'll be a felony.
Are there any consequences or penalties if, with state grants that would be present in this Adult Use Marijuana Act if we don't cooperate and don't have a plan in place? What are the consequences of doing nothing?
Well, there are some kind of theoretical grant monies that I believe under the Adult Use Act, we do have to allow some amount to be eligible for them because they're kind of mitigation costs type of things. So a ban would disqualify us from those. I don't know if those are going to materialize anyway if they're that vague a consideration. If we don't do anything, I don't know what the consequence is. I think it's wiser if we're not ready to go to just do a ban in the meantime. We can always change. A long time ago, there had been a provision and if we're not ready to go by, I think it was April of 2016, we'd lose our right to regulate. That was silly. It's gone. There's nothing like that now that says if we're not ready to go, by the time the state is ready to go, you know, the state is going to supersede our authority. You know, we can always change.
The last point I want to make is you did make reference to enforcement, that the options in our community, additional code enforcement. And, you know, I'm troubled by that because the reality is we don't have enough personnel to enforce existing law. Now, we're going to exacerbate that with additional workload for our one code enforcement officer. And I wonder how you make up that deficit because it is personnel that has to be deployed to enforce laws, make sure it doesn't get into the wrong hands. For instance, you have to be 21 and pass on at 21. So I'm wondering how we would do that without this tax consequence, which you're not addressing in today's workshop. I imagine you will in a future workshop.
Yeah, we'll do whole workshops on enforcement and on tax consequences. But to put it shortly, you know, when you're abating nuisances, there's the opportunities to get your costs back. We would have to be kind of aggressive, maybe skip the administrative process and go into superior court and do receivership. But there's ways that we could do it if it was worth it to us. As far as stopping people who are 19 or 20 from getting it from somebody who's 22, I just don't see anybody enforcing that at all. You know, I definitely, it's not code enforcement. That would be an actual law enforcement duty and I'm sure they have better things to do than that.
The last part of it, and we talked about it as a result of your previous workshop, is you were kind of, you didn't feel the federal government was going to really take an interest in these cases. Well, I'm listening to Attorney General Sessions and he's speaking a different tone than what you emoted here. What about the federal level? We're going through these on a state level and without consulting our federal partners on what their intention is to do with legalization of recreational marijuana. In this case, the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, could it be invalidated and all this is for nothing?
Well, again, I think that that's something we'll get into at a different meeting. It's not a land use issue. But yes, Jeff Sessions has been saying things, but he hasn't been doing anything. And I don't think he will, but it is something we need to talk about because technically, I think, under federal law, it is racketeering, right? To be profiting off this stuff or taking tax revenue off this stuff. Another reason to sit and wait and see what happens, but I, like I said last time, I think it's really unlikely and I think so does everybody who's investing billions of dollars in this thing. The war on drugs, including the boondoggle that is attacking marijuana growers, I just, you know, we've got to build a wall. We don't have money for, you know, marijuana enforcement.
Let's just stick to marijuana. We'll worry about the wall later. But, you know, I think the argument is, he is talking about it. Attorney General is representing the United States government and he is talking about it. He's in office as the Attorney General in a relatively short period of time. I think that's a clear message that the federal government is not happy with the direction California is taking. And I think we have to be cognizant of that.
We do. And again, this is not a land use issue, but, you know, we're talking about 44 states that have some kind of legalized marijuana. You know, I'm not sure that it's something we need to be that worried about.
Thank you, Joel. I'd like to hear from the public at this time. Joel, thank you for answering those questions. You'll probably be asked to return.
Sure.
Stay close if you can, please. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment on any portion of Joel's presentation or anything else that you might believe you need to add at this time. And don't be shy. We could have an exchange if you'd like and a dialogue with the board. I like the process that we took place at the last board meeting and as it related to this discussion and that dialogue, again, I believe would be healthy. So please, if there's any public comment at this time, step forward, state your name for the record and try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Appreciate it.
My name's Eric Ginter from Gasky. I want to start out by thanking the board for hosting another workshop. I think it's super helpful for the county. We all need to know, you know, where we're all coming from. We all live here and we all know it's beautiful and we all want to keep it that way. I think just, I'm going to keep it pretty short. I think I just want to point out a couple of things that mostly that have to do with just the complete ban. I don't think a complete ban is going to be cheap. There are enforcement that has to happen. It's, we know in the past, being a complete ban, it takes money to prevent people from black market growing. I think if you look at the vastness of our county with all these areas that, you know, people can come into a county knowing that this is a county that it's banned at, but we don't have the money to enforce a ban, you could have a lot of people coming here growing in our forests and with us no way of actually being able to control that. The middle of the road situation, I think, is really perfect for our county. I think a lot of people would agree with that. It gives us control over, you know, the growth of the industry, the size of the things that will happen here. So I just want to make sure that we all know that a complete ban is not cheap. Any one of these options is going to be expensive for the county. We just need to make sure that whatever we do returns an investment that the county's going to put forward. I want to thank you guys and I look forward to the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Eric.
Thanks for letting me speak. My name's Alan Orton. And I was drafted 50 years ago, just down the hall here. I had the first card in this county in 1997. They brought a Japanese film crew and did an hour and 20-minute interview with me at the First Club in San Francisco. I'm the first man out of 5,000 of these for the medical part. Dr. Mika Razzid's name, this first one for the PTSD in the state of California. I also have a shop over there on Worthing Boulevard. And if anybody in here would like to grow with me, you can contact me anytime you want. Name's Alan Orton, O-R-T-O-N. Ben, you're on the line.
Thank you. Public comment.
Jesse Davis, 3rd district. Thank you, guys, for paying attention to this and taking time in the evening to do this. It's important. So let's see, I did want to see if Joel was willing to touch on the idea of a moratorium on new grows possibly as an option to a complete ban. I spoke with some reps from the Calaveras County Growers Alliance and that's something that they're working on. They have a pretty conservative board and that's one option they're considering in order to try to prevent an influx of operations while the county is trying to figure out exactly what the ordinance is going to look like. Because it's going to take a long time. We don't want to come up with a quick, bad ordinance and have to do it all over again. I think it's worth taking time to get it right over time and then find a legal way to mitigate it in the meantime. I don't know legally how a moratorium works. Maybe Joel can answer that quickly. Let's see. And then as far as timber conversions and TPZ tax base, I don't see that being like a big issue considering the size of land we're talking about. And a lot of, like, I own a small piece of TPZ property and it's not marketable for timber and the county collects $0. It's so low that they don't even generate a bill because it costs more to send out a bill than it's valued at because it doesn't have any marketable timber. And there's a lot of TPZ like that. There's TPZ that has grazing land. There's TPZ that has open space already. So just because it's zone TPZ doesn't mean that it has marketable timber that could ever yield tax base to the county. It would actually yield more taxes to the county by giving it another use that generates revenue. And that's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Davis. Public comment. Public comment.
Hi, I'm Robert DiRigo, Crescent City. I'd like to thank you all for addressing the recent voter initiative and the Medical Use Act via these medical and recreational cannabis workshops. One of my concerns is, of course, local access, but that's not really what we're going to be talking about too much today. So I wanted to assure you, you know, economically, just keeping local access is 1% of your GDP right there. However, what is more encouraging economically is that for every 2% of the state cannabis market that we supply in cannabis products, we grow our county GDP by over 20%. It's about $60 million for 2%. Our GDP is now dominated by county spending and state prison salaries alone. Figuring whether we can afford to keep our government going, we should be looking at the people that are earning a wage about 20% less than the nation of Uruguay in Crescent City. Private sector revenue will be our only source of jobs in economy should government funding for our county and its employers ever momentarily fail. Allowing private sector growth locally and the only viable economic driver at hand, the only one, I have a tourism business as well, aligns with the widely-held principles of limited government that are so dearly clutched in our community. What is more profound than economic stimulation is that cannabis access is correlated with great community advantages and harm reductions, including significant declines in opiate use, overdoses, and the deaths that these drugs cause, as well as reduced alcohol sales and improved road safety as alcohol accounts for over half of traffic fatalities nationally, alcoholism being the leading cause of preventable death in our country. Some of what I am saying runs against the opinion of law enforcement union positions, but what I say is aligned with actual data and statistics kept by state, federal governments, including law enforcement agencies. I have heard opinions that cannabis access is correlated with increase in crime in Denver. This is cherry-picking data, as large cities across the nation have seen an uptick in crime over the last two years, regardless of cannabis access. California medical cannabis is still the largest single experiment. We're about a third of cannabis users have used the flower legally as medicine since 1996. Crime in California has dropped significantly from 1995 to 2013. One study found neighborhoods with greater cannabis access saw a reduction specifically in crime in neighborhoods with the greatest access. And so I would like to just, you know, it's about, it's 100 million in prison payroll. I think your guys' budget went up like 25%, or, you know, about 100 million, $300 million GDP. I can't even do the math to figure where the private sector comes in this county. And it's a non-principled stance. It's not fair, and it's not equal. And so I think cannabis industry might help balance that out. And I'd like to see it defined as agriculture, because currently, our agriculture is just pathetic. You know, you look at the 4,000 acres of lily and a little bit of timber harvest, which all leaves the community to create jobs in Oregon. It's time that we look at what's going to create a living wage job here. I've done the $10 hour thing, we all do. You know, it's only the government worker that really isn't. So you guys haven't taken a risk. I don't think you really have to, but we all do daily. We cut our cable, you know. We just need jobs. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Public comment, please, sir.
Kerry Kerberly, District 2. I'm a little concerned about this, and the biggest thing is that I still look at what the federal government has listed as a felony, to grow and distribute this. And I think what you really have to look at, too, is that, like, we all, especially you take oaths of office, your law enforcement, myself as a retired peace officer, takes an oath. And in this oath, we swear to obey the laws, practice good citizenship, and not only just our local, state, and federal laws, but our local ordinances, you know, Constitution of the United States. And I think there's a big cross here. When you go ahead and let some other drug come into our society, besides all the ones we already have. And I can't see, really, a lot of people to stop drinking alcohol because they're going to smoke marijuana. My biggest fear is that people, is really, the business is going to come from people my age, who are retired, and this society wants to do something else with their lazy lives. Another thing I'm worried about, too, is that if you create the ordinance here, if you let the state say, "Well, the state can do whatever they want," you're really setting yourself up here for a big liability. Because a typical example is, look at the friends of Del Nord and the lawsuits that they are doing. But they usually do it, okay, with a small group of people that go against the federal government in the Clean Air Acts, right? They're hitting them. If you do this something yourselves, it's always going to take is a small group of people to come together in this county and start legal proceedings against you because you're in violation of federal law, not state, not county, because you created it, but you're in violation. So that's something you need to think about. Does, can the county afford legal action against it if they start something? I think you're better off waiting until the state initiates something, maybe some kind of protections that's still not going to give you protection against the federal government, depending on what they decide to do with this. Because remember, still, if it doesn't change at the federal level, it's not going to change anything here, you do. And if you don't have a bunch of local people come together and say, "We don't want this in our county," a small group, all right, you could have the federal government stepping in here and file action against you because of what you've done and a violation of federal law. So you could be hitting from both ends. And I really think you need to look at this and decide that, hey, how much is this really worth? How much can we gain out of having it? You will, there will be some benefits if you tax this, right? There'll be some benefits, but the black market is still going to exist because that's capitalism. You're still going to have these guys growing a few pot plants in the backyard, are going to go over and sell it to the neighbors for a few bucks, teenagers or whatever. This is, the unscrupulous people are still going to, you know, "Hey, I want to buy myself a McDonald's today. I'm going to go sell some of my marijuana to the neighbor kids," or whoever at the high school, wherever, adults, it doesn't make any difference, "I'll sell it on the beach." You go to Brookings right now and buy marijuana. So, I mean, I don't understand. I mean, if you want marijuana, there's a lot of places you can get it without going to black markets. Oregon is one big place. So anyways, I just wanted to bring that up, so you really seriously think about this, and the cost, the real heavily cost, and our attorneys going through these court cases all the time, just from, you know, wherever they come from. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kerry. Public comment.
My name's Billy Debacker here, and I'm concerned with what you guys are doing. I have Parkinson's disease now, I have a bad back, and I'm very interested what marijuana can do for me. And I would like to be able to grow pot in my yard and have someone that knows how, or learn how to make it into a sap or CBCs that would help me. But over my years, I've smoked plenty of pot, and I'd rather have someone driving down the road smoking pot than drunk out of their mind. I'm sorry to say that, that I know it does your reflexes a little bit, but, and the pot is illegal, and alcohol is actually legal, you can go buy it in a store. So whatever you guys do, you need to really think about the black market. The pot is going to get there, it's going to get to the kids no matter what you do. It's been doing that for, as long as I've been around, they've had pot for kids, you can get it wherever you want. So trying to think that you're going to eliminate pot to kids, you're not going to do it, ever. Just like the alcohol, they get to alcohol the same way. And we've all lost friends and family to alcohol wrecks. And you don't hear that much about marijuana wrecks or taking lives. You hear about, oh, it goes on to bigger, bigger and better drugs. Well, that's the parent's job to raise your kid, not to choose, I think is the main thing. But I just would like to see the county recreational, I'm kind of against recreational drugs, but as far as medical marijuana, I think it is a very good thing to do for this county. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Blake Alexander, dairy farmer out there in the green zone. I don't like coming to town and telling other people what I think they can't do on their land. That's awkward, but I guess I'm here anyhow to do that. You know, I guess I want to give you guys permission to go on record as being opposed to allowing this, period. You know, I agree with what the fellow just said, I understand that. If we don't grow it here, you can get it elsewhere. I also want to speak on behalf of the kids and the next generation. To me, that's what everything's all about. Everything I do every day is about kids, and my kids, your kids, our kids. And somebody's got to speak on behalf of the next 10,000 kids that we try to graduate through Del Nord High. Every year, we put 300 or 400 in there as a freshman, and we graduate 150. And it's a slippery slope to allow marijuana to come into our culture and change what we do. I think it would be wonderful if our kids can grow up in a community where they say, you know, "We don't condone and allow marijuana use. We know it's legal, it's legal at the neighbors' counties, it's just not legal here." And we can hang our hat on that with a lot of pride, and, you know, the fellow behind me here that mentioned the 4,000 acres of pathetic lily growing or whatever, first of all, it's less than, it's probably 400 acres, the other 4,000 are the part that I function on, and we do our best to grow products that make kids' lives better. And that's organic meat, milk, and eggs. And we work really, really hard at that, and we want to make that available to a lot of kids and a lot of people. And that's, that's really, you guys have a duty to uphold laws. I didn't make the rules, I didn't make the laws. This is, and the fellow that said it's going to be costly to enforce something if you make a stance against it, well, shoot, we've had a stance against it for hundreds of years. What's the cost to enforce it? You know, so I just don't get that. I just would love to see us maintain where we're at, six plants is already allowed, we can't do anything about that. Joel, I was with everything you said until the end, you got really silly, out of line silly, okay? We don't know what Jeff Sessions is going to do. I've been to DC a couple of times this year with the new administration already, and they shocked the shit out of me. And stay tuned. So be careful on that advice. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board at this time. Supervisor Gatlin.
I'm so glad you spoke that way, Blake, thank you. How is it? Mr. Debacker, you're here. Drunk driving, drug driving, any kind of driving, it's not one for the other. Lives will be lost if we legalize marijuana in this state. Additional lives will be lost because of drugged, D-R-U-G-G-E-D, driving. It's not tit for tat, want this for that, it's not. It's bad, and it's going to take down our county. And I oppose it. I will oppose it today, and I will oppose it tomorrow, and I will oppose it for any time in the future, that bringing in marijuana and normalizing it into this community is some kind of a bane for this community. It's going to be a drain on this community. And I cannot support taking this county down. I cannot support that one as, for satisfying what I can only call pop culture mentality. The people voted on this, so the people get this thing, and then we get what's left out of it. We get the debris that ends up with, I hope 150 people can graduate high school, that the number doesn't go down below that number, Blake. So we have to do things that enhance our community. What's not being discussed here today is the entrepreneurial, the entrepreneurs who are sitting in this audience who are telling me you're going to be, you're going to be the new future small businessmen, looming in the shadows is a force so big and so powerful you haven't recognized it yet, and it's called big tobacco. They have all the money and all the resources, once this thing gets up and going, to put any entrepreneur out of business in distribution, growing, and whatever. And that's what your future will be, is big tobacco will take over the growing of cannabis, and it will normalize it. So be aware of your dreams that you have now and expecting that you're going to create these jobs here, when in the back room there is a giant so big and so well-funded, it's beyond intimidating. And I hope it doesn't get to that level. I hope Del Nord County stands tall and opposes this, because I'm going to. I don't know what my colleagues are going to do, but I'm going to oppose this because it's a bad thing for Del Nord County. And I will tell you that, that there's no upside to this. I don't see the upside. I see more drain on our county and more problems that are going to be caused if we accept this drug, this entry-level gateway drug into something more severe. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Additional comments at this time? Great. Well, thank you, Joel. We had an extremely informative meeting today. Thank you, Supervisor, for sharing your thoughts. I know we've got a great deal more presentation to happen before the board, including some of the taxation piece that I know you'll present in the near future. On that piece, Joel, I'd also like some outreach done specific to maybe Humboldt County or Colusa County, where we've received presentations at CSAC in December. I know they've gone quite a ways down the road with their programs. Really want to see how that's ferreting out, specific to financial impacts, pros and cons. In addition, some of the items that you explored, specific to the SEQA and EIS, EIR, thank you, Jerry, NEPA-SEQA. Where Humboldt County, is my understanding, was sued on the grounds of SEQA and not doing a full-blown EIR. I'd like maybe Community Development to explore that a little further, what would be essentially the cost if we pursued a county-wide EAR on these lands. That's a piece I had hoped had heard about this evening. EARS are extremely expensive, maybe the programmatic programs that you discussed by the state would take care of that, but you've also discussed that the state's probably not going to be prepared to do much of anything come January 1, 2018. Some wrestling matches there.
It's difficult to predict exactly how much it'll cost without kind of knowing very specifically what we're going to do. Humboldt is in the process of doing a full EAR, and we should, you know, steal from it when we can. That might reduce the cost. That's more likely than using the statewide program. You know, Randy might be able to give a better idea of really what it will cost, but a lot, right?
Yep. Yes, a lot. So, you know, that being said, really appreciate your time. Thank you for trying to maintain a neutral position. I think the board and the community needs to continue to hear that neutral position from county council on this issue. Elizabeth Joel's doing an excellent job in preparing this information. We appreciate you giving them the time to do that. Just because you see the group that's here this evening doesn't mean that each one of us isn't receiving calls at home or emails specific to either pros or cons about this issue. And some people, to a certain extent, are even, whether they're supportive or not, they're not showing up here today. I'm appreciative because I think this is the first time we've seen some of the people that are willing to get up and speak about a ban on it. It's the first time we've heard that today from two individuals. I know we had two in the audience last time that chose not to stir up anything and left early. So this is going to be an interesting discussion going forward for the county, and I really appreciate everybody's time to be here this evening. Thank you again for showing up, and we'll let you guys know far in advance when the next meeting of this type is going to occur. As Joel mentioned, it's probably going to be around potentially the taxation and financial issues associated with this type of permitting, if this is the path we go down. Thank you again for your time, and we're Thank you again for your time and we're glad to get you out of here in an hour and 10 minutes. Have a great evening. This meeting's adjourned.